Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do it as right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Ryska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Scharowski.
Here.
Koski.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Ms. Yanis.
Here.
And Ms. Ziarco.
Present.
Thank you, council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Koski.
Move to approve the agenda.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. I have only one task on my report this evening, and that is to introduce Daniel P. Gil Martin, who is the Executive Director and CEO of the Michigan Municipal League. He would like to address the city council this evening to talk a bit about what's going on at the league and also to address a council member. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. First off, congratulations to all of you on your recent election. I think it's, as someone who works for communities all over the state of Michigan, it's always good to see communities that are doing well, that are well-run, that are making investments, and the people in their communities and the infrastructure here and really making them great places to be. I always talk about at the league, our goal is to help improve the human experience in a community. People say, "What makes it for a good community?" And we say, "We're always trying to improve the human experience, whatever that might be." And as you guys all know, it means a whole lot of different things that come before all of you, and a lot of issues that, some of them easy, some of them not so easy. You've always done a great job with that. The community's always been very engaged. I want to thank you for being so engaged with the organization. I think it's important not just to do great work here, but to reach out and help other communities and even bring back items from other communities as well. There's a community of communities out there, if you will, and you guys have always been very engaged in that. I want to say thank you for that. And lastly, I would like to congratulate in person our council member, Ziarco, who was recently chosen as the President of the Michigan Municipal League. There are 533 cities and villages across the state, all with elected boards, all with appointed officials, and all working to make those places better. And to have Barb recognized amongst her peers as someone who they've asked to lead the organization, the board of trustees of the organization for the next year, I think says a great deal about Sterling Heights and certainly says a great deal about Barb and the work she's done, the confidence, the quiet confidence, I think, that she brings to the table, and certainly has caught the respect of her fellow board members, of course, around the state. So, thank you very much for lending us Barb for the year. We promise to bring her back. No worse for the wear, and I look forward to continuing to work with the city in the years to come. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
And Mayor, on behalf of the city administration, we'd like to congratulate Councilwoman Ziarco and now President Ziarco as she proceeds in her term with the MML. And Mayor, you'll be glad to know that is the only item on my report this evening.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. We have a couple of presentations tonight, some great ones and I'm excited about. First is to acknowledge and thank Meyer and Warthogs MC Southern Macomb Chapter for their generous monetary donations to the Sterling Heights Police Department and Honor Guard, respectively. We have a presentation from our police chief, Dale Dwojakowski, and Lieutenant David Allen. Chief, Lieutenant? Thank you. I'll be turning over the floor to Lieutenant Allen.
Mayor, council, city attorney, city manager, thank you very much for having us here tonight to acknowledge a few businesses and groups that have contributed greatly to the Sterling Heights Police Department and several functions that we've had throughout the years. I've had the opportunity over my career to work with several different agencies, but I'd like to pay special note to two tonight, that of which is Myers and the Southern Macomb Warthogs. First of all, I would like to introduce to you, for Myers tonight, Justin O'Neill. He's the store director, and Carol Sobolowsky, the retail administrative assistant. I'd like to start out by saying that Meyer is the epitome of giving back to the community. I've personally reached out to the store and their representatives over the years, and they've always been willing to help with no questions asked. Some examples of this that I'm referring to are the law enforcement torch run. That's a group of officers from the Sterling Heights Police Department that gets together every year to run for Special Olympics and bring awareness for their athletes. We meet with the Michigan State Police and the Corrections Officers Team, and we run from the U.P. all the way back down to Sterling Heights, I'm sorry, the metropolitan Detroit area. It used to be Sterling Heights. Every year that I've gone to them over the last 15 to 20 years and asked for any food and supplies, they've been generous enough to donate, and in fact, gone above and beyond and donated money to Special Olympics on the team's behalf. In 2020, due to COVID, we had a local family with kids the ages of, I'm sorry, kids the ages of 23, 19, and 12, who lost both their parents just before the holidays. We reached out to Myers and asked them if there was anything that they could donate, and they donated the entire decorations for the house inside and out, and we were fortunate enough to decorate the house for them, to kind of give them some holiday if we could. We recently had Tim Horton's employee, young man riding his bike there, trying to make a better future for himself, left his bike in front of the store, and someone decided they wanted to take it. Myers, we reached out to Myers, and they donated a bike to us so that that young man could continue to move forward. And then recently, as of recent, we had the Golden Ticket Raffle Program, where 20 families in need were included in the project. Tickets were given to several different bureaus and departments, and officers got to pick some of those needy families or submit. On December 24th, the chief picked one of the winners out of the hat and received a grand prize made up of donations collected from businesses in our community. The 19 other families received gift cards. Meyer was a key business with the donations obtained. Their donations throughout the years have helped the city of Sterling Heights become one of the best communities to live and work in. On behalf of the Police Department and the city of Sterling Heights, thank you for continuing to give back to our community, and we look forward to working with you for years to come. I have a plaque for you guys, and on that plaque it says, "The Sterling Heights Police recognizes the Sterling Heights Meyer for their outstanding support of our community. Thank you for your unwavering commitment to the citizens of Sterling Heights. Your generosity reminds us that every act of kindness can change a person's life." All right. Next up on the agenda is the Southern Macomb Warthogs. In attendance with them tonight is Nick Trucker, the President, Dave Bonacorsi, the Vice President, Keith Gurney, the Sergeant-at-Arms, and then we have members in attendance, James Kaiser, Adam Kaiser, Robert Gurney, Kimberly Bonacorsi, and Steve Nita.
Wow.
You're getting them all.
For those of you that aren't familiar with the Southern Macomb Warthogs, they are an international organization with chapters in the U.S., Canada, and Norway. They are comprised of mostly police and firefighters, and their main goal is to raise money to help fellow officers and firefighters in times of need. They are involved with numerous fundraisers throughout the year and do an annual shop with a Warthog event, helping underprivileged families with gifts and food during the holidays. I would assume that it's similar to Shop with a Cop, correct? Tonight, we're paying special recognition to the Southern Macomb Warthogs for their generous donation of $5,000 last spring to the Sterling Heights Police Department Honor Guard. However, this group took it a step further and donated to six additional police and fire organizations last year for the same amount, and they intend on donating again this year to different police and fire agencies in the area. This donation goes directly to our Honor Guard unit. It helps provide for uniform maintenance and equipment. It allows officers to participate in the National Officers Memorial Week in Washington, D.C. every year, paying homage to those that have paid the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. As many of you know, COVID has played a major role in the last two years, and our Honor Guard unit has had to postpone several annual fundraisers with still-incurring costs. The donation made by the Southern Macomb Warthogs has allowed us to continue to maintain our level of excellence and honor the fallen and their families. So, tonight I would like to present you guys with the plaque. It says, "From the Honor Guard Sterling Heights Police Department, the Southern Macomb Warthogs. For your generous donation to the Sterling Heights Honor Guard, your donation will directly assist in honoring the fallen and their families." Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Lieutenant Allen and Chief, you know, to both Meyer and to the Warthogs. We're very proud to have you as partners in our community, and we thank you for the work that you do, and thank you for your generous donation. It's very meaningful to us. It's great to see, you know, just, we have an incredible community here, and it's because of people like you and corporate partners like Meyer that help make this community the great place that it is. So, thank you for your support of our Police Department. Thank you for your support of our Honor Guard. They do incredible work. We're blessed to have the Police Department that we have here in the city of Sterling Heights. I know not every, not every community is as lucky as we are. So, from the bottom of our hearts, thank you. And council, anyone else? Any comments or, I think I speak on behalf of all of us up here, that we really truly appreciate and thank you for everything you do. One more big round of applause for both of you. Council, we do have a suggested action.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolved to acknowledge and thank Meyer for the generous donation of $1,000 in gift cards to the Police Department's Golden Ticket Holiday Program, and the Warthogs MC Southern Macomb Chapter for the generous monetary donation of $5,000 to the Sterling Heights Police Honor Guard.
Support. Been moved and supported. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again, Chief. Next, we have a swearing-in ceremony for new Sterling Heights Police Officers. Another presentation by our Police Chief Dale Dwojakowski. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of council, Mr. Vanderpool. Another exciting night. Four brand-new recruits with 25 years to go. It seems like I was just being sworn in yesterday. I am so proud, not only of this hiring class, but just a little bit of background, our hiring list here in Sterling Heights, we had 100 people apply that wanted to be a Sterling Heights Police Officer. Far and away, the best hiring list anywhere in southeast Michigan. More people applying here and wanting to be police officers here. That speaks volumes for the city, for the Police Department, and with that, when you're getting the number-one number of applicants anywhere around here, you're getting the best applicants from any Police Department. All four of these guys came from another Police Department. I already make some apologies to the Sheriff Wickersham and Chief Cody over Utica. They understood. I did call them the day of your swearing-in, and I did apologize. But that is what's happening. So, again, I am beyond proud of our new hires. To my left here, I'll introduce you, Officer James Bryant, and if that name sound familiar, Jimmy Bryant. We had a sergeant here, Jimmy Bryant. He's in the crowd tonight, and his mom as well, Jim's mom. But James is the son of Sergeant, retired Sergeant Jim Bryant, who retired in 2015. Jimmy grew up here in Sterling Heights, Henry Ford Falcon, correct? So am I, so I like you already. Get these Stevenson people out of here. Jim worked at the Macomb County Sheriff's Department as a deputy and became a deputy in 2020, correct? And then was a dispatcher in 2018 to 2020. And the great thing about that is he dispatched for Sterling Heights. So, he was already our dispatcher. He knows the city. He lived here, and he dispatched here. Again, top-notch recruit. To his right, Justin Porter, another familiar face that some of you have seen. I've known Justin for a million years. Again, one of our explorers, our Police Explorer program, paying dividends, again, kind of a cadet recruitment system. Justin was one of our Police Explorers for many, many years, and now here he is. After the Explorer, he says, "I'm going to be a Sterling Heights cop one day." And how many years ago did you leave Explorers? It was a long time ago. 15 years ago. So, here he is, as an officer with us, and we are so excited to get Justin back. He served as a Reserve Deputy in the Marine Division on the ATV units as well. He was a dispatcher for Sterling Heights. So, another guy, lived here, born and raised here, dispatched for the city, and on top of all that, his grandfather is one of our retired Police Officers, James Porter, worked at Sterling Heights Police Department. So, a lot of legacy and family, so we're so excited to have you, Justin. To his right, Corey Chase. Corey started with Utica PD in 2019, grew up in Macomb County, went to Dakota High School. My wife teaches there. We didn't talk about that. I don't think you had her. But Corey, again, Utica Police Officer, and I apologize to Chief Cody. We, you guys, both of them, if you don't know, Corey and Jack, standing to his right, are both from Utica PD. So, we took two really, really good Police Officers. Chief Cody said, "You guys are the best." So, he was happy for you guys, and we're so happy to have you. And Jack, on my right here, also Macomb County Sheriff's Deputy, and grew up in Romeo and was with Utica since 2019. So, and, again, the caliber of officers here tonight, absolutely phenomenal. We're so excited to have you. And with that, we'll go ahead and do the swearing-in.
Go ahead, re swearing-in.
Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, George.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And that of the state of Michigan.
And that of the state of Michigan.
And that I'll faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
And that I'll faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
In and for the city of Sterling Heights.
In and for the city of Sterling Heights.
And that I'll strive to maintain the highest standards of that department.
I'll strive to maintain the highest standards of that department.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Congratulations. All right, Jim, if you want to come up here and say a few words.
Not much of a talker, but Mr. Mayor, city attorney, city manager, council, thank you all for your support of the department and all of us. I'd like to thank my wife, the rest of my family, and everybody for their support along the way as well. Thank you. Glad to be here.
Come on.
Let up, Justin.
Don't be shy. Don't be shy.
Thank you, Chief.
I want you to walk that same way when you pull me over for speeding.
Mr. Mayor, city manager, city attorney, council, I want to thank you for your support. As Officer Bryant said, being a legacy officer, this is actually a dream come true for me. Took a little detour to get here, but ultimately, I'm blessed and honored to be wearing this uniform and serving the city of Sterling Heights.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to take this time to thank everyone for being here tonight. Thank you, Mayor, city manager, city attorney, council. Thank you. I want to thank everyone else for taking the time out of their day to come here, and I'm truly honored to be here, and I look forward to serving and protecting the citizens of Sterling Heights.
Mr. Mayor, city manager, city attorney, councilman, I'd like to thank you guys for the opportunity. The city's an amazing place to work, and I can't wait to spend the next 25 years here. I'd like to thank my beautiful fiance, my parents, for coming out tonight. They mean the world to me, and I'm really happy to make them proud. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate you being here and the ceremony tonight. I'll open it up. Council, any comments for our new Mrs. Scharowski?
I'll jump in. Thank you, Mayor. So, officers, thank you for being here. Congratulations and welcome. As Officer Porter said, it is, we are honored and happy to have you here as well. So, thank you for being here, and thank you for protecting and serving us, and we will be here to help keep you safe as well. So, welcome. Thank you, families, for giving us your sons. My son is a military police officer, so I understand a little bit of what you're going through, and I do appreciate everything, and thank you, and congratulations.
Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to tell you all, I'm so happy to see you here. You're taking on a life of public service. We're all public servants up here. We all have the public trust. We're going to expect a lot out of you in Sterling Heights, but you're also going to gain so much from our diverse and welcoming community. We're a community that supports the police. We believe firmly in doing what's right. So, you're going to get a lot of training. I've already saw some of it on Facebook today. It looked a little painful, but doing a great job. This is going to be one of the greatest experiences of your life, because going to work and serving the people every day is the greatest reward you can have. So, stay safe. We're going to do what we can for you. We're going to expect a lot, but you're going to learn a lot and be great, I'm sure. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Anyone wants? Mrs. Ziarco?
Okay, since Mr. Radke brought up training. But anyway, welcome aboard. We're glad to have you, and I did see the training video. I just let you know that I feel your pain, because when I was in the civilian academy, I got tased, only because you had to know what it felt like if you were going to talk about it and if you were going to buy tasers. So, yes, so, but welcome aboard. We look forward to all of you serving the great residents of Sterling Heights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ziarco. Well, I just want to say, welcome aboard. We are lucky to have you four gentlemen. You know, one of you said that you were happy to make your family proud. You're going to have the opportunity to make about 134,000 people proud, and another 60,000 people who work here every day. You are coming into a department that I think a lot of you know a lot about already, and we hear a lot about this being a destination department. I think you know why that is. But it's your department now, and it's your job to maintain that reputation and maintain that legacy for the people who come after you. We have every confidence in you. We know you're going to be successful. We thank you for sacrificing your time and taking on this responsibility. You know, there's inherent risk that goes along with this, right? And you have family members here who love you and want to see you come home safe every night, and we do too. That's why we up here will provide you everything we can to make sure your job is as safe as possible. If you need something from us, make sure you tell your bosses, and they'll certainly tell us, believe me. But Godspeed to you. Good luck. Enjoy the rest of your night with your families. One more big round of applause for these four. Thank you, Chief. Dismissed. We'll take about two or three minutes. Let you guys clear out if you'd like to. You're welcome to stay. We've got a very exciting agenda tonight.
Always a full house when you're swearing Police Officer.
There sure is.
Wish this many people cared about Bound Road.
We might be able to get through this.
All right. With that, we will move on to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is to adopt an ordinance to amend Chapter 25 of the city code by adding Article I to prohibit discrimination in housing, employment, and public accommodations. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Whichever one wants to go first.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Last time I was up here, about two weeks ago, and I spoke about the merits of the issue, I think, more so on housing and on hiring. But today, I want to give a little bit of just a personal perspective on this. I was born in 1988, which seems like a long time ago. I know some people disagree, but when I talk to my students and I tell them that, they think it is forever. But it is back before, don't ask, don't tell, in the military, and it is back before my husband and I were able to get married, which is why I have this ring here on my finger, which wouldn't really have been a state-sanctioned thing not that long ago. I think it's somewhat coincidental, I guess would be the appropriate way to put it, but it's actually kind of nice that this meeting here comes the day after Martin Luther King Day, because really, when you take a look at that legacy and you take it in a perspective, I kind of look through the lens of equal opportunity for all people. My children, my classes that I see, I try to give them a door to the world beyond and let them do what their heart desires. If they want to go abroad and do something, that's fine. If they want to stay in their hometown, that's fine, too. And if they want to make a difference, I'm there to empower them to the best of my ability. And I think with this ordinance, it allows people to feel like they are empowered to make the most out of their lives in the place where they live, and can attract people to live here feeling that this place really offers opportunity. We have some wonderful people living in the city, wonderful opportunities, and as we just saw, some wonderful Police Officers. I'd like, I would ask that the council consider highly of this proposal and adopt it tonight, and really increase the opportunity and well-being for all of its citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Mr. Orchata?
Man, it's always hard following up Johnny. He's so eloquent. I wanted to thank council for taking up this.
Thank you, sir.
I wanted to thank council for taking up this tonight and for treating it with the seriousness that it really has for members of our community. As John eloquently put, historically, opportunities and respect and such have not been there for the LGBTQ community, and I really appreciate Sterling Heights doing what it can to be at the forefront of defending, you know, its citizens and giving them the protections that they have long deserved and needed. So, thank you again for your time and your support, and I ask that you pass this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this item? Mr. Nelson?
Mayor, council, Ken Nelson, 40862 Fire Steel Drive. I'm here tonight to voice my opposition to the passing of this ordinance amendment. I am not the only person out of the 134,000 that feel this way. I feel that seven people to make a decision like this is not good government. Should this, if this needs to go back on and this amendment needs to go, I believe it should go to the voters, decide how they want to have that happen. I listened to, I've listened to all of this. I listened to the introduction by Mr. Radke. I listened to the remarks by the mayor concerning if people want to go out and sign petitions, let them go freeze their butts off. That, to me, just, it irked me, okay? People have capability of speaking against anything that you guys bring up. 8,000 people did in 2014, and supposedly, it was the same ordinance. 8,000 people did in 2014, and supposedly, it was the same ordinance. There are, if you guys decide that you're going to do this, there are several areas that, first of all, I'd like you to look at. Gender dysphoria, D-Y-S-P-H-O-R-I-A. It's the mental part of gender identity. This is not mentioned in here. In your policy statement, in 25-2 of this proposed amendment, you are saying this also includes races, colors, religions, national origins, sexes, ages, heights, weights, physical and mental abilities, marital statuses, family statuses, sexual orientations, and gender identities. I believe everything else in reference for your policy is for disabilities, as far as physical and mental disabilities. Under the intent, prohibition against discrimination as provided for this article are intended to supplement state and federal civil rights laws. We have civil rights laws except for two issues. You're going ahead, and we are, I am concerned about the issues that we have heard on the news. And according to you, Mayor, these were all debunked as far as rapes and whatever in public restrooms. You have restrictions listed in this as, excuse me, exceptions. 25-11, you say exception, all of this is true, except for the, to restrict the use of laboratories, locker room facilities on the basis of sex, which is another one that's brought up. For the government institution to restrict any of its facilities. I wonder, now, if we have gender identity and somebody identifies with the opposite sex, if they're going to use the restrooms over at Dodge Park. That is a public accommodation. No matter how you look at it, it's a public accommodation. Public accommodation here in these restrooms. Anyplace we have a restroom in the city of Sterling Heights is a public accommodation. You need to look at this much closer if you're going to pass it. I am voicing my opposition. I do not believe in adding sexual orientation or sexual identity, and I thank you for the time.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Nelson. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, we need a motion? Mr. Mayor. Mr. Radke.
We just found the, "Resolved to adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 25 of the city code by adding Article I to prohibit discrimination in housing, employment, and public accommodations."
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mr. Radke?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just briefly. This has been a long time in coming back. I'm proud to support this ordinance. I will say that I don't take boogeyman arguments as anything that I should take into account when I think about the people. You know, statistics show that people who are transgender or are gender fluid are more likely to be beaten up in public restrooms than to be perpetuating crime in public restrooms. So, I kind of find it very insulting and frankly, bigoted to come up here and make this argument that if we pass an ordinance that is to stop discrimination, that somehow there's going to be these negative policy effects. So, I'm proud to support this. I'm happy to see it pass, and if the opposition wants to try to get rid of it, I wish them luck. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Counsel, anyone? Mrs. Sarowski?
I am just going to say what's right is right, and we are doing what I believe, what I know is a right act, and that we are here to support the residents, all residents, and this is, I am full support of this, and I have nothing further.
Counsel, anyone else? Well, it's quite a difference then, seven, what, seven years can make quite a difference, I guess I would say. Almost eight years now. So, I'm not going to repeat everything I said last time. I'm going to thank the speakers who came up. It's very illuminating to hear. You know, maybe, Mr. Nelson, you're not the only one in the community, but you're the only one who came up here and talked against equal protection and equal rights for people who are in a vulnerable class. And so, I'm proud to stand with the seven councils, six council members, my colleagues. I'm proud that we're going to pass this, and I think it's long past time. So, to the LGBTQ plus community, we want to send a message that you are welcome here in the city of Sterling Heights. We are doing everything that we can to be as inclusive and welcoming and open to every person, regardless of your background, regardless of where you might have grown up, regardless of what country you're from, regardless of what ability or disability you have, regardless of who you love, and regardless of what color your skin is, who you worship, and what your nationality is. And so, we are actively, not just talking that talk, but walking the walk. So, I'm proud of this council, and proud of this city. So, with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. With that, we're going to take a brief recess. I have to leave the meeting at this point. I have a conference that I'm attending, and I have a flight that I have to catch tonight. So, I am going to be stepping down off the dais, and Mayor Protem Sarowski is going to be taking over the meeting from here. So, with that, we'll take about a five-minute recess and come back.
I'd like to welcome everybody back to the city council meeting. We are now at the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on any item in the consent agenda? Mr. Nelson.
Good evening again, counsel. Just for information purposes, this is an item that I should, that I believe should not be put into the guise of the consent agenda, is item number G, to approve the agreement with indemnification provisions between the city of Sterling Heights and Michigan Economic Development Corporation for grant proceeds to enhance election administration. Case number 344424. I would like to get further information. I did go to the backup. I did go through all the pages, pulled it all up, and I believe this is something that the people need to know, what we are getting the grant for, and what we are doing with our security, and putting cameras out at our boxes that are located in front of fire stations. But I would like this to be explained a little bit further. It's up to you guys. As usual, you'll probably just go through and pass.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Anybody else on consent agenda? Any items to speak on? Seeing none, could I please have a motion from council to approve consent?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mayor, Mrs. Kaski?
I should say, Mayor Protem.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Support. The item has been moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Thank you. And next item up on the agenda is number nine for consideration. It is to consider approval of memorandums of understanding between the city of Sterling Heights and the MAPE supervisory employees, MAPE professional and technical employees, and MAPE technical office slash employees union. We have a presentation by our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vander.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Sarowski. As you know, we periodically have to negotiate memorandums of understanding with our bargaining groups. In this case, we have three of them, and they pertain to three positions that were approved in the budget process. And I'll just briefly describe the positions. The first one is the Assistant Finance and Budget Director. With the recent departure of the Utility Service Manager, the Finance and Budget Director determined that the creation of an Assistant Finance and Budget Director job classification provides greater overall benefit to the division than simply filling the vacant Utility Services Manager position. An Assistant Finance and Budget Director will provide greater direct management control over the division's multiple offices, which includes financial services, treasury, assessing, and purchasing, than is achievable with the current organizational format. The new Assistant Finance and Budget Director classification is also part of our succession planning for the director position. As council knows, over many years now, we've had a robust succession plan. And when we know that there are positions that are going to turn over in the next, say, three to five years, we start thinking about replacements for those positions, and this may be one of those cases. So, succession planning is always important for organizations. It's really paid huge dividends for our organization. It should be noted that the creation of this position does not add to the city's employee headcount due to the elimination of the Utility Services Manager job classification. The second MOU this evening pertains to Planner 1 and Planner 2. As the city council is acutely aware, the Office of Planning is understaffed based on the city's size and level of development activity. City Planner, City Development Manager has a planning coordinator as his sole professional planning staff. Again, that's highly unusual for a city our size. In light of this need to bolster planning personnel, the fiscal year budget includes funding, as I mentioned, for the Planner 1 position. As this position does not exist in the 2019 CBA between the city and the bargaining unit, the MOU thus had to be negotiated, and that's before you this evening. The budgeted position will increase the professional planning staff within the Office of Planning from two to three. And, you know, as we highlight frequently, the development activity in Sterling Heights is quite remarkable. We're averaging about $100 million a year of new permitted construction activity. And to only have two people is remarkable, we're able to get through that. So, this puts us more in the best practice category with staffing. And the last one is an Assistant Building Official. The city recently completed a successful recruitment for a new building official, as many of you may know. The process, however, revealed there is an extremely limited pool of qualified candidates eligible to fill a future vacancy in this classification. So, in light of this experience, city administration evaluated and decided to create, here again, an Assistant Building Official classification. This mid-level position within the Building Department will allow for an internal candidate to promote to Assistant Building Official, and provide a logical advancement to Building Official when that opportunity may arise. And again, this is consistent with our succession planning for this position. The new job classification will not increase the city's full-time employee headcount, as the Assistant Building Official will promote from an existing personnel within the office. So, with all of the above in mind, and with the MOUs before you this evening, I respectfully request that the Mayor Protem and the city council approve the documents this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. Anyone in the audience have any comments on this proposal? Seeing none. We have three suggested actions. We're going to take them individually. Counsel, do I have a motion on suggested action number one? Mayor Protem Sarowski. Yes, Mrs. Schmidt. Resolve to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Sterling Heights and MAPE supervisory employees creating the Assistant Finance and Budget Director job classification, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the memorandum on behalf of the city. Support. It's been moved and supported. Do we have any comments, Mrs. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Yacko?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Sarowski. I am always so happy when we can bring a compromise like this to the table. And certainly, there's a lot of negotiations that go behind the scenes that we don't see, we don't take part in, that bring the ultimate decision here to us, and that's what I'm grateful for, is that we can come to that compromise and decision, and we just have to approve it.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other comments? Counsel? Okay, we need a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Thank you. And now, we're on suggested action number two. Counsel, do I need a motion?
Mayor Protem Sarowski.
I'll go with Mr. Radke.
Resolve to approve memorandum of understanding between the city of Sterling Heights and the MAPE professional and technical employees creating the Planner 1 and Planner 2 job classifications, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the memorandums on behalf of the city.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Mr. Radke, any comments?
Yes, briefly, Mayor Protem. I think this is a great start to improving our Office of Planning. It has been understaffed for a long time. We've had to wait a long time for a lot of the things to come out of that office. I can't wait to get another person in there, so I'll be supporting this.
Okay, thank you so much. And Mrs. Yacko, any other comments?
Good.
Very good. Okay, it's been moved and supported. So, we shall vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion for the suggested action number two carries. And now, on to suggested action number three. May I have a vote, please? Or could I have a motion, please?
Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor Protem, sorry.
I'll take the mayor, but Mayor Protem is fine for now. Yes, Mr. Yannis?
Resolve to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Sterling Heights and MAPE Technical Office Employees Union creating an Assistant Building Official job classification authorized by the mayor and city clerk to sign the memorandum on behalf of the city.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any comments?
No, I think the city manager explained everything well enough. No comments.
Very good. Mrs. Yacko, any other comments? Okay, very good. Moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And suggested action number three also is approved. So, now, we can move on to communications from citizens. Nope. Nope. Oh, beep. Oh, so sorry. We have a second consideration, and that is to consider an appointment to the city of Sterling Heights Board of Review. Any comments from the residents in attendance? I see none. Counsel, we need a motion? Mayor Protem. Yes, Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolve to appoint Patrick Rye to the Board of Review for a term ending June 30, 2024, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any comments, Ms. Schmidt?
Nothing.
Mrs. Yacko?
Nothing.
Okay. Any other comments from council? All right, it's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Now, we can move on to communications from citizens. Any communications from those in attendance? Mr. Nelson?
Thank you. Just like to really find out. I hear meeting after meeting, when I bring up issues about the public is not informed, we are not really seeing an open government. I see comments from you about that all of the 400 pages of backup material on things that are located in the consent agenda or anything else is available to the public. I would love for the city to do a poll and find out exactly how many people watch these council meetings to see what's going on, how many people go in, pull up the agenda before these meetings, how many people look up and try to get through the 400 pages. One suggestion I have for your 400 pages is that these, all these individual items are not indexed. It'd be a lot easier if you're looking for a particular item on the agenda that you go and it's indexed, where you go right to it. You have to skip around and find the right page. Okay, just one suggestion. But I would like to know exactly how many people, doesn't have to be exactly, it can be a guesstimate, how many people actually go on the system, bring up the agenda, and then go searching for items of interest to them. I don't think it's exactly like you think. That's one item. Other item was, I watched the Planning Commission, a repeat of the last Planning Commission meeting. Mr. Radke, I agree with you on something. What the heck's going on here? There was an issue with Mr. Gallo, represented by Mr. Rogeri, on developing an O2 section of property that would empty out onto Irving. I don't like what I'm seeing here, especially, and I'm going to bring up a little election information, especially when a lot of things are developed by Mr. Phil Rogeri. There's a lot of money floating around at election time from Mr. Phil Rogeri, from Mr. Gallo, and from the Secretary of the Planning Commission. I don't like to see this. It's $2,000 given by Mr. Gallo to the mayor's campaign, and many other ones. $2,000 given by Phil Rogeri to represent all these people and get part of our $100 million in development every year. And also a planning commissioner, right off the bat, in the primary, $2,100, the maximum. I don't think that's cool. Just wanted to bring that up. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nelson. Yes, Ms. Brandy.
Thank you. First, I want to say happy birthday to our Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
I also wanted to address the transparency. You can sign up for an email the Friday before the meeting. You'll get the package, you get the agenda. Anyone in the city, or even outside of the city, can easily access all of the information. It is not the city's responsibility to force-feed our citizens what is coming up on the agenda. If they don't want to know about it, if they don't want to come to the meetings, that's their own problem. You know, I hate to say that. They should. I would love it if more people came, but we can't force them to come. I also do want to mention just briefly what Mr. Nelson said about donations. I believe the Supreme Court has decided that donations are a freedom of speech right. You can sort of donate to anybody you want. It doesn't really matter. And there's nothing that, you know, you can do about it. So I understand if he's concerned, but it really shouldn't come into play, and it doesn't mean that there's corruption or anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Anybody else like to speak? Yes, Ms. Jonathan, come on up. Mr. Matthews.
Good evening again. She beat me to it. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
If some citizens are happening to watch this meeting, and I understand, I agree with Mr. Nelson, I do wish participation rates were higher here. We do have an excellent meeting coming up that people should pay attention to if they want to know how the city is running. I believe strategic planning is this upcoming Tuesday memory serving. That would be a really good one to see. It has a lot of high-level things, and you can see the direction the city plans on taking in the weeks and months ahead, even years, if I want to be very optimistic. But things, of course, do change. That can be an excellent way to do things. With regards to the indexing, I actually would like to see that as well. However, I don't know, depending on the order of the documents, what file formats and whatnot they are, how practical that is with the timeframe given. It is a lot of information to dig through. I've done it a couple of times, using Ctrl+F and then looking for words, for example, can save a lot of time. I often find, like our previous speaker has said, that people who really want to find information have a tendency of finding it. And I find there is quite a bit of information in those packets, maybe a bit too much for one night of reading. So sometimes if, you know, you know a meeting is coming up, it can pay dividends to look in advance, see what it is that you want, and then spend time looking through the fine print. With some of these memos of understanding here in any contract language, that is something that takes a significant amount of time, but sometimes the important details are in that fine print. Ms. Minister Vanderpool, I'm sure is well aware, when negotiating with unions, the fine print is sometimes what holds things up for months at a time. I'm definitely familiar with that with the education unions. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Anybody else? Communications from citizens. Okay, we'll close that portion of the meeting and go to reports from city administration.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Sarowski. I wanted to comment on an item that Mr. Nelson expressed some interest in, and that is Consent Agenda Item G. Let me just, well, first, before I provide some details on that particular item, let me just say with respect to the consent agenda, I'm not aware of any governmental entity that does not have a consent agenda. In fact, many corporate organizations have consent agendas for their board meetings and the like. The reason for consent agendas is to provide for a more productive meeting in that more substantive issues are specifically listed on the agenda. Under consent, they're more routine items. So grants, for example, with respect to Item G, would be more of a routine item. Purchases, we have hundreds, thousands of purchases in any given year. Those typically go on, always go on consent. Memorandums of understanding, again, that's something that's a little more significant, that would not go on consent. So if the consent agenda did not exist, our city council meetings would go three, four, or five hours long. It would be impossible to get through all the agenda items in a meaningful way. So you could imagine, I don't think many residents would tune in for that level of time. So actually, that would be counterproductive, and thus, that's the reason for a consent agenda. Any resident can comment on consent agenda items, and we provide additional information. And again, all the backup material for the consent items are identical to any item on the agenda. So nothing is scaled back in terms of the backup that's provided on consent. Now let me respond to Item G specifically. That is a grant that the city received for election administration equipment and software. It's a $200,000 grant, so pretty significant. We're very pleased to get the grant. In fact, Representative Nate Shannon was instrumental in helping us obtain the grant. Some of the items, well, all the items that will be included for purchase include the following: the purchase and installation of security equipment at the facility where election equipment is stored, and the remote ballot drop box locations. That component's $50,000. So obviously, elections are important. It's vitally important that there's good security on all of our buildings, and especially with respect to the drop boxes that we now have, which will have cameras on them to make sure that, you know, there's nothing unusual going on. We certainly don't expect that, or suspect that, I should say. But nevertheless, it's important to have extremely secure equipment and facilities. The purchase of election equipment, including precinct laptops, printers, ADA-compliant equipment, high-speed envelope openers, all of which cost $100,000. IT software, $12,000. Supplies, including tables, ballot containers, and the like, $18,000. And various administrative costs of $20,000. So again, this was a grant from the state. We're glad to get it. And it will help make what is already foolproof system in Sterling Heights for elections even better. And that's what we're about, is continuous improvement, doing whatever we can to improve all facets of our organization, especially the most important, preserving democracy. Let's see, I think I've covered, oh, I did want to mention, the item mentioned by Mr. Nelson concerning a planning commission case has not even come before city council. In fact, it was postponed by the planning commission for further information, further details. Obviously, there needs to be some improvement in the proposal that's been made. So this item, the city council has not even considered it yet, and it'll probably be months before that happens. So just wanted to clarify that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Mr. Kachubski, anything tonight?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. No.
Okay, very good. And city council, then. We can go on to new business, or any comments from council?
Madam Mayor Protem.
Yes, Mr. Yannis.
First of all, I'd like to say that I've been on this council a very short time, but I've never heard the city attorney get more shout-outs in one night than they did tonight, so.
Yeah, he did. Everyone shouted.
Yeah, just, well, first of all, let me, through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool, do we have a roster of speakers for next week's meeting, next Tuesday's meeting?
Councilman Yannis, we do. In fact, you'll be getting the formal agenda on Thursday. The public will get it on Friday. We'll list out all the speakers. You'll also be getting the backup material, as you normally do, in your Thursday packet. In addition, we have provided some draft. But I can give you a brief lineup, or I'll be happy to send it to you earlier if you'd like.
No, that's okay, sir. I just want to know that we had one. I would frankly prefer to have it for tonight's meeting, but that's fine. So I just, I don't like to respond to stuff, but, you know, I just, you know, this suggestion that somehow because we, I, anybody received a contribution from somebody who does business in the city is somehow doing something dirty or on the side. First of all, you don't know me very well. I've gotten $10,000 checks from some large organizations that are very upset with me because I didn't do the things they had hoped I would do. And I can say that, as far as I know from my colleagues, I know a couple of my colleagues who have a builder developer in the city that's very upset with them because they didn't vote the way he wanted them to vote. Just the suggestion that somehow we're bought and sold here is upsetting to me. And I'll just let that go at that. I do know, I mean, if you really want to be upset about something, be upset that we got a grant from MEDC, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, for this election gear money, the software, and so forth. MEDC, Michigan Economic Development Corporation. Why are we getting our tax dollars back from that corporation to run our city business? Somebody should ask about that, right? I agree with you on that one. And think about this, since I'm railing against MEDC, recently, we had politicians in Lansing, Republicans and Democrats both, who in the duty, in the process of doing the duty of their jobs, signed non, I'm sorry, NDAs, non-disclosure agreements with MEDC over potential work that could happen in the state of Michigan, and in doing so, voted to create a billion-dollar fund. I have never heard of an elected official doing their work for the citizens of their community, their state, whatever, sign a non-disclosure agreement. If you want to look for something that's upsetting and potentially, I don't want to use the word dirty, I'm not going to say dirty, untoward, look at the state and look at MEDC. And ask your elected officials why they signed an NDA. The, as far as the backup material in the, in our packet, it's got 400 pages because we try to be transparent. It's overly transparent. It's a lot of stuff to wade through. I appreciate the gentleman's comment about Ctrl+F. Ctrl+F is magic. You know, if you know how to use Ctrl+F, you can find just about anything that you want to find about, know about. It is somewhat overwhelming, but it's overwhelming, it's all there because we are trying to be transparent. Simply, so I just simply want to say about transparency. I think our city does a really good job. And on top of that, by the way, if somebody really has a question, I think about 20, 25, maybe 30,000 people in the city have my personal cell phone number. They have my personal email number. I'm pretty sure everybody sitting up here probably has their personal cell phone number floating around out there, not to mention my city cell phone number and my city email number. So anybody has any question, whether it's in the packet, what have you, call me. It's transparent. It's calling me at home and asking me a question. If I don't know the answer, I'll call Mr. Vanderpool or somebody and find out what the answer is. So, you know, I don't know where this lack of transparency exists because all people have to do is ask. And so now I'll get off my soapbox. And I just want to say, yesterday was Martin Luther King Day. I did a little volunteering with Meals on Wheels. I do a regular route every other week. As a matter of fact, I'm doing my route tomorrow. Yesterday was a special day because they handed out these special meals, and a lot of people were there, you know, both the people who distributed the meals were driving through, and then a large group of people, including a bunch of students from Clinton Valley, not Clinton Valley, Boy, it's just.
Chippewa.
Chippewa Valley, thank you. Clinton Valley is something completely different.
Yes, it is.
Chippewa Valley, I'm showing my hatred. Chippewa Valley High School, a bunch of kids from Chippewa Valley were there. And, you know, and I took some snapshots and I put it on Facebook, you know, and I got some, you know, thumbs up and people like that. But I was thinking about so many people who volunteer every single, they just don't, they don't wait till Martin Luther King Day or one specific day of service. People who volunteer every single day, and they get no recognition for it, whether it's helping an elderly neighbor down the street, whether it's taking in a family member or loved one that needs some help, you know, whether it's tutoring kids, you know, volunteering as a coach or what. People volunteer all the time, and we never, we don't always recognize those folks. So I'm going to take this moment to recognize and thank every single person out there that gives up even the slightest minute of their time to make their community a better place, and to make someone's life a better, a better life. So I just wanted to say that about volunteering. I know everybody up here on this dais has volunteered, and I'm sure a lot of people watching this have volunteered as well. You know, I hate posting that stuff because I'm not looking for pats on the back, but I thought it was, I thought it was worth the time and effort to let people know that a lot of people were volunteering that day for Meals on Wheels, a very worthy cause. And, but I just also want to recognize so many people that volunteer all the time, every day, without recognition. So this is their official recognition, I guess. Anyways, that's all I have. Madam Mayor Protem, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yannis. And we'll appreciate it. Mrs. Yaco?
Mayor Protem Sarowski, thank you. First of all, following, you know, Councilman Yannis after that, when you get worked up, you know, Henry, you just get all of us worked up. But I have to agree with you about Martin Luther King Day and setting it aside as a day of service. My daughter and I had this conversation yesterday, and it says, I said, every day should be a day of service to somebody. You know, there's, it's opening a door. It doesn't have to be a lengthy time of service, but there's always somebody that needs something. Could be your neighbor, you know, could be somebody from your church, could be a phone call that you make, or maybe several phone calls to people that don't get out. But it is. But it is, service should be part of your life. And volunteers just make a community that much better because they're doing it for the right reasons. They're not getting paid for it, they're doing it because they know there's a need. And when you feel that need, you do become first, you actually feel better knowing that you helped somebody, and it's just a good feeling. So I encourage everybody to volunteer all the time, not just on Martin Luther King Day. So that being said. And then Mr. Matthews brought up our strategic planning meeting, which everybody on this council knows is my favorite meeting of the year, because we've turned it from a night of possibilities to a day of possibilities. So, but my question would be, through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool, because we're doing this all day, are we breaking the segments down to be replayed to the community? How are, because I can't imagine somebody sitting there and watching the whole thing all at the same time.
Councilwoman Zarco, yes. Where there's going to be segments of the strategic planning, they're broken up in the morning. We're going to be talking about our visioning 2040 plan, believe it or not. Our visioning 2030 plan is nearing the end, hard to believe. So we have to begin thinking about the next 10, 15, 20 years. So we're going to devote a well over an hour just to that in the morning. Then we're going to have a segment on, we'll be talking about the ARPA funding that we've received and prioritizing where that funding should go. Ultimately, city council's going to have to make that call based on community feedback. We've received hundreds of responses electronically on our website on the projects that we put forth at the community forum. So I think that city council and the community is going to find that session really interesting. Then we're going to have an update on the Velocity Center and some of the new initiatives that are going on there in the spirit of entrepreneurialism, which is helping to sustain this vibrant economy that we are experiencing in Sterling Heights. And then we're also going to have an update on what we're doing to promote our boards and commissions. Volunteerism, as you, council members just mentioned, is so important, and we rely on hundreds of volunteers to help run this great organization. And it's always a challenge to retain our volunteers and recruit new ones. And we're thankful that the city council approved a new position to help administer our many boards and commissions. The applications, professional development training that they need, equipment that they need, rules and procedures that have to be established, and so on and so forth. So I think you'll be very interested to hear the progress that we're making with respect to that position. And then finally, we're going to conclude by hearing about, from our various boards and commissions that need to report to the city council annually. And some examples would include the Sustainability Commission. You heard from them briefly a few months ago, but you'll be getting a more detailed, comprehensive update from the Sustainability Commission on all that they're doing. Our Youth Advisory Board has been doing great work. You're going to hear from them on their good projects and initiatives and some ideas that they think the city should be pursuing as we move forward, especially when we think about visioning 2040. And then you'll hear from a couple of other groups, like the Community Alliance, some of their initiatives, and the African-American Coalition. And then we're going to have plenty of time, about an hour or more, for city council engagement. You're all going to have some ideas that you want to talk about and new ideas that you want to put forth, so we're going to have plenty of time for that. And then after each segment, city council and residents will be able to weigh in on their thoughts for each component of strategic planning. It'll be entirely televised, it'll be taped, we'll publicize the rerunning of the meetings. And it's a good idea to break it up and maybe even advertise or promote separately the components of strategic planning. So there's a lot on tap for next Tuesday. We look forward to it. It'll be really exciting.
Thank you.
And through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool, and maybe Mrs. Riska could answer this too, but did the MEDC give out grants to other communities for the same purpose? And I know that when I was on one of our subcommittees for MML, I was calling Mrs. Riska all the time about what city clerks were doing as far as what did they want to uphold or make the city clerk's job easier or more efficient when it came to our elections. And they used some of the examples that we have right here in Sterling Heights in the legislature when they were negotiating those bills. And part of it was just the drop boxes that were at all the fire departments because they were monitored 24 hours a day. So those are things that they brought up when they were doing this with the legislature, but I don't want anybody to think that MEDC just gave the money to us.
Councilwoman Zarco, if you don't mind, I would like to respond because first, I love bragging about our city clerk, and if she responds, she won't do it. So first of all, we have one of the best city clerks in the state of Michigan, and that's why she was voted City Clerk of the Year. First, let me clarify. MEDC did not run this grant program, and I share Councilman Yanez's frustration over the recent legislation that resulted in Sterling Heights losing $1 million annually. And we're going to push the governor and our state representatives to develop a permanent replacement plan. So far, their plan only provides one year of replacement revenue. We're going to work hard on that, and we're going to hold them accountable. But the items that were in the grant came from our city clerk and her team. There are items that, as I read them off, items that they felt would make our process even better and by way of raising the bar even higher. So I commend our clerk and her team for coming up with it. And short answer to your question, not all communities got that grant. We worked really hard with Representative Shannon to put together that grant application. It was specialized, customized for Sterling Heights. There is one other one on the agenda tonight, too, and that is a significant grant in the amount of a couple hundred thousand dollars for tree, increasing our tree canopy in Sterling Heights, which is a major initiative. And that's going to advance the football in that area significantly. So we're super excited about both grants, but they only went through MEDC as a pass-through agency. There was, the state didn't know how else to administer those specialized grants for Sterling Heights, so they ran them through MEDC. But in actuality, MEDC really had nothing to do with either grant.
Nothing further.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Zarco. Council?
Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Ms. Kaski. Go ahead.
Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool. Back to strategic planning again. You said that the public and council will have the opportunity to comment after each session, correct? Is there any way that we could publish that schedule on Channel 5 and 10 so that if there's a certain subject that somebody wants to comment on, they could just see what time that's going to be on the agenda and be able to attend that so that they then could make their comments? Because there aren't going to be any decisions made, there isn't going to be any voting or anything. This is just an input session where we're gathering information, excuse me, from the public and ideas from council also. So if you could do that, I think it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Sure, sure. And if you don't mind, Councilwoman Kaski, we do have thousands of people that sign up for our listserv to automatically get our agendas, as it was mentioned earlier tonight. So they will get that agenda, and we will break it down by item, and it will have time slots on it. So, you know, plus or minus, maybe 15 minutes. So you're right, we don't expect people to come and sit there all day long, but there may be a topic they want to tune into.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kaski. Go ahead, Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. A couple of things, just very briefly. I want to echo my colleague's frustration with the governor and legislature for eliminating or raising the cap on the PPT, personal property tax we receive here in Sterling Heights. You know, we're a manufacturing city, and we have a lot of manufacturing facilities. The fact that it was done the dead of night, without any debate, without any hearings, they didn't ask cities who are, they're taking the money from, to give the corporations what we do with this money. So, you know, I actually got on the horn. I called up my state rep, and I called up anyone who would listen to me, and I said, you know, am I supposed to cut police officers? Are we supposed to cut a fire inspector, Mr. Yanez? Are we supposed to do this? Because you're taking money out of our pocket that we're already planning to spend because we've gotten it every year. And you're saying, oh, we'll make you write for one year. It can't be more frustrating, the way that our administration acts, that they didn't even ask someone from the city or the MML or anyone to come way in and say what this would cost us. A million dollars from the city, that's like at least eight police officers a year in salary. So the idea that you can just cut this and no one else is going to feel it, I will get irritated, and I will stand on my soapbox, and I will say, at least make us part of the conversation. But when you do it in the dead of night, you pass it in the middle of the night, and we wake up the next morning, we find out you've taken a million dollars out of our budget, what are we supposed to do? And then what happens is when we cut those police officers, we cut those firefighters, or we cut the parks program, we're going to have angry residents coming down here and saying, why'd you cut? It's the governor's fault, and it's the legislator's fault, because they're not doing their job, which is to take information from everyone. When all you're hearing is lobbyists up in Lansing whispering in your ear, this is the way to go. And the fact is, they said it was for small businesses, but the local McDonald's, I know it's independently owned, it's not a small business. You know, that's who's getting the money. It's not, it's not your local diner. They don't have enough equipment to even qualify into the current cap. It's big business that's massacring its little business and taking money out of the residents' pockets. And frankly, I hope you call your legislature and say it's BS, because it's BS. Took the money from us. That's the first part. Second part is these grants through MEDC. What I find frustrating is a grant on election administration was what was brought up, not the grant on trees. I think that right now, in this environment, people are trying to act like we shouldn't receive grants from outside entities because somehow that could corrupt our process. Well, we had a, we had a presentation in here earlier from the Warhogs and Meyer. They gave thousands of dollars to our city to benefit our residents. If we're going to start cutting grant funding or gifts from outside residents, well, we have a police car that was funded by a dealership for free, our community services vehicle. Should we give that back? I mean, the idea that we can't take grants to fulfill the needs of the residents, residents don't want to pay taxes, so we get grants. And so we don't want grants. Well, then you have to pay more in taxes. You know, money is limited. So how we find and pay for that is tricky. And I'm so happy to see $250,000 for trees. I might not have to raid the CDBG fund for them this year. I feel pretty good about that. That's very, I'm very happy about that. And finally, I want to close with strategic planning, and I want to echo Councilman Yanez's comments. I'm sorry that we haven't seen the schedule for strategic planning before today, because strategic planning is for our board, us, to set the stage for what is going on in the city. And too often, I feel like it's a top-down approach from city administration, which doesn't involve us, but tells us what we're supposed to do. I know in the past, Councilman Yanez and I have echoed that we need to talk about police and fire administration. As it stands right now, and I haven't seen the agenda, I don't think there is an agenda item on that. So in the future, I would recommend to city administration that they either poll the colleagues or in meetings, we decide what we want to talk about as strategic planning, because having one person set the agenda for the entire city is not the spirit of the charter or how we should be doing business. That's all I have, Madam Mayor Protam. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments. First, as was mentioned, the concern about transparency, and I'm not going to beat a dead horse. However, Mrs. Wright, you hit it right on the head. We can give as much information as we possibly have, which we do, but you can't force anyone to read it, to get involved in it, to educate themselves on it. There's nothing more we can do. And it's pretty frustrating to be accused of not being transparent to our residents because we do supply all the information. We are all available. I can't tell you how many times a week that I will send things to Mr. Vanderpool, answers that I don't have, that he gets right to, back to residents. So to say that we're not transparent, I think is very inaccurate. And you, you know, it's kind of like the kids in school. You can give them all the tools to get As, but they have to want to earn those As, and they have to put a little work in themselves. We can't go to individual homes and say, this is what's on our agenda. That's just not feasible. It's not practical. So, you know, if people want to be involved, and they should be involved in their community, we have an amazing community. But there is some work that the residents have to do in order to have that happen as well. It's a two-way street, and we put the information out there. And just like the students, they have to be willing to do a little work to educate themselves to earn that A. Mr. Yanez, you brought up volunteers that are not recognized. Those volunteers that usually volunteer every day don't want the recognition. That's not why they're doing it. And I really appreciate recognizing them, because there are people out there doing things specifically to get that recognition, and people that volunteer from the heart aren't looking for that. So thank you for recognizing them, and I thank all those volunteers as well. And as far as strategic planning, Mr. Vanderpool, it starts at 8:30 a.m., correct?
That's correct.
And what is our estimated time of departure?
Well, what time is lunch?
I just want to know what shoes to wear.
Councilwoman Schmidt, good question. It really depends on the city council. I mean, we could be out at 5:00 or we could be out at 9:00 p.m. It's in your hands.
Oh, so it's breakfast, lunch, dinner, and maybe a snack?
Sure.
Okay. And other than that, I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Yanez.
I just, I can't, I can't let this go, so I apologize. But all I'm going to say is this, if the state of Michigan can't figure out how to get our tax dollars back to us, they got to funnel it through a corporation, then maybe they're overtaxing us. That's all I got to say.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Maybe. Okay, thank you, Mr. Yanez. All right, so thank you, council. I am just going to say a couple of words, and that, I'll start with first, strategic planning, yes, it is definitely, although it is Mrs. Diaco's favorite day, I am, I'm taking the day off from work, and I will be here with bells on, and I am looking forward to it because it is definitely a day, I really do recommend that the residents maybe not show up for the entire day, but certainly do find the agenda, we will be posting it, and do follow things that are of interest to them, or at least tune in and watch what they can. And I do encourage, because that is certainly a day of, probably the most informative of how government works and what we are doing in this city of the entire year. So I do encourage that tremendously. Yes, MLK Day was yesterday. Martin Luther King, tremendous man, and I am glad that we could vote today on an anti-discrimination or non-discrimination ordinance that does help support in the spirit of what he stood for and a lot of what I would like to always be recognized and remembered for. And today, it has been mentioned a few times, yesterday is my birthday. I'm calling it my 38th birthday for the 20th year anniversary. I'm 58. But, so for my birthday, to the residents, I ask to go out and volunteer. I've been a volunteer since I can remember. I volunteered when I was in elementary school for things. I love to volunteer. I think that it's, doing something for somebody else is just, it's the greatest act that you can, even if you're helping just somebody tie a shoe or holding a door for somebody. Please do something for somebody else in the spirit of kindness, in the spirit of goodwill. That is what makes this city great, it's what makes us great, it's what makes this country great. And I do ask that, for me, for my birthday, if at all, if you could do that for me, that would be great, but for everybody else, I ask that. And that's all I have. So in that, I ask for a motion to adjourn. So moved? Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed.
A motion carries. Any opposed? A motion carries, and this motion, this meeting is adjourned. Now you can say, sir. Yes, please, go ahead.